To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The Danvers Public Schools' mission statement is, "Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence." I think I could refer to that. Is anybody taping the meeting? Good, nobody's taping the meeting, great. All right, so we'll start with items of interest to the superintendent.
Thank you. We have a couple items there, but before that, wanted to share with the community that we had a former educator of Danvers pass away since our last meeting, so we want to send our sympathy to Carol Eaton's family and friends. Carol was our assistant superintendent and actually started off as the middle school principal in Danvers in 1987, and she was with us through 1990 as the assistant superintendent. So, I had the good fortune to work with Richard and Carol. They were the team that hired me when I came to Danvers in 1990, so we do think about her and her family at this time. Other items here, we have scholarship notes. We wish all of our 2018 graduates a wonderful first semester as freshmen in their college year, and many of them that received scholarships through the school committee sent us thank you notes over the summertime, and then also included for you, your subcommittee and liaisons that you had chosen at your last meeting, so that form is in there for you also. Thank you.
Great. Items of interest to the committee, anybody? No? No? The public, anybody have any items of interest? I don't see a lot of public. All right, nothing from there? All right, then we'll go right to information from the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. We have five items today to talk about the beginning of the school year, so school opening updates. In your packet, you have our welcome back letter that we sent to all of our staff. This is a year that we're making a change, and all of our staff will report back to school before Labor Day this year for two days, the 29th and 30th of August, and then our students do come back on September 5th, that Wednesday after Labor Day. Would like to thank all of our administrators, teachers, and our DPW, everyone that works to get school ready. We have a busy two weeks coming up with the kickoff tonight with our school committee meeting, we have our administrative retreat on Wednesday, new teacher orientation on Thursday, and then four days of professional development next week, so we're looking forward to all of that. In today's meeting, when we get to new business, we'll be talking about the strategic plan, and Mary has a presentation for us that pulls it all together from our visioning work. One other piece that I missed about the beginning of the school year, this year we do have our state election, the primary, is September 4th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day, and so with that, we will be holding our opening day, all of our pieces, at the Holton Richmond Middle School this year, so that way this building, without students on that day, can be used for the town, for the state primary election. So that again is on September 4th. And then, looking at the last piece for school opening, wanted to share some changes with Danvers Cares, and we have our interim director, Lyle Harret, here with us, who's going to talk in a few moments from some pieces of information that we shared with you in your packet. And at the end of June, Peg Saliday departed from the Danvers Public Schools, and so with her departure, we have been working with Lyle over the summertime. We do thank Peg, she had many years of service with the Danvers Public Schools, with the town of Danvers, with Danvers Cares, and really brought us through that first major grant in looking at substance use prevention and the work there. So, and she worked with us on the strategic planning to get ready for the next five years, so we do want to thank her for all of her efforts in supporting the health of our students and families in Danvers. So over the summertime, we've been working with Lyle to make that transition for this coming school year, really looking at the work, the connection with the work with the town, and the different surveys that our town manager has done, and looking at the health of the town of Danvers, working with the Danvers Public Schools with our strategic plan, and that mental health, social emotional learning are really the foundations for having students access the curriculum, the instruction, and being able to be successful in their academics. A structural change is we also moved the Danvers Cares office from upstairs in the high school to be part of the Curriculum Center, so we're really looking forward to seeing Lyle on a daily basis in the district offices, and working with our partnership and the coalition for all of their efforts. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Lyle Harret, our interim director for Danvers Cares, who's going to talk about all of the work that we did with strategic planning and pulling it together with an action plan. You'll also notice that the action plan follows sort of the same template that our Danvers Public Schools, we're really trying to have it all coordinated for school committee members, and also for the community to follow our plans in the coming years.
Thank you, Dr. Dana. Hello, everybody. Happy to be able to address you for the first time as interim director. It really is a pleasure to be here, as somebody who grew up here in Danvers, it was a dream come true to be able to, you know, give back to the community that gave so much to me. And, you know, as you'll see, Danvers Cares has and will continue to build a lot of the partnerships out in the community that really do add all that additional value to our youth when they're outside of the classroom. So, yeah, over that, I do, would like to direct you over to the one pager that we have on Danvers Cares', continued focus on youth development. This is an effort to just sort of be transparent about the language that we'll be using in the coming year. During the strategic planning process, the major sort of themes that were identified were changing the language that we're using around the work that we're doing. People were really happy with the work that we're doing, and we want to continue doing that work, but we're also making sure to focus on the most positive aspects of our youth and to continue building on those strengths, as opposed to just pointing out weaknesses. So, you know, as our vision statement says, healthier decisions, healthier lives, healthier futures, what we're going to be doing is focusing on a more holistic approach to serving the youth and families of Danvers. So that's going to be calling for not only that direct work with students of all ages, but also the education and engagement of parents, teachers, and community members. So you'll see a sort of continued focus on a lot of the work that we've been doing, you'll see a lot of the same events. You know, for instance, we have our upcoming Atlas and Athena program, where we have senior student athletes mentoring incoming freshman athletes at Danvers High, and we also have the upcoming Parent University on November 3rd, which is a day of workshops and a keynote speaker, Jim Vedder, as an expert on social emotional learning. So, that, those are an effort to focus on specific social emotional learning skills and tie what the work of Mary Wormers in the Curriculum Center and all the administrators are doing in regards to social emotional learning, and doing our best to bring that out to the community, out to parents, and out to other programs in the community. So you'll see on the bottom of that one pager, you'll see a breakdown, just a brief sketch that I put together, as a way of explaining positive youth development as the overarching theme of the work, and knowing that that's just a large sort of umbrella theme, it's a pro-social approach that is not just focusing on the students, or not just focusing on one part of the youth, but focusing on the youth's internal skills, the support that support the youth, and then the families and the community organizations that also sort of all blend together to make a great experience for Danvers youth growing up. So the main focuses will be on social emotional learning, which as outlined by the Department of Education, will be focusing on the five core competencies, which I'm sure you'll be hearing again at some point tonight, would be my guess. So we're working on really streamlining the language that we're using, so if in the classroom we're talking core competencies, are there ways that we can be partnering with the Danvers Rec Department, the Danvers Community YNCA, and other organizations that are youth-serving to make sure that we're talking the same language? Also, the developmental asset framework, that's a framework that's been around for a few years now, it started up by the Search Institute, and it's a great framework that sort of points out the community approach to how we're going to be raising our kids. It gives you the, it breaks them down, breaks down assets into internal and external. So internal are going to be internal to the youth, there's the personal skills, commitments, and values that they need to make good choices, take responsibility for their own lives, and be independent and fulfilled. Those external supports are the, everything from the one-on-one relationships with adults that a youth might have, to having a supportive neighborhood, to of course having a supportive school administration and faculty, and everything in between, including supportive business, religious, and fraternal organization supports too. So next, I'll direct you over to the, let's just go onto the Danvers Cares Action Plan for 2018-2019, that's the one that's in the format that you'll be hearing from the other administrators about their school plans. So this, the goal of the action plan is to take a lot of the outcomes that we put together in our strategic plan, which we've presented on already, and give you a little bit more concrete idea of when all these things are going to be implemented, who we expect from the community to be involved in implementing them, and also some of the resources that we'll need to get it all done. So I'm not going to go by, go through each specific one, but I think you'll see that there's sort of a mix of listing out a lot of our old programming, well, old and successful programming that we're holding on to, everything from Atlas and Athena, Parent University will be bringing back a version of Strengthening Families, we had a very successful Light the Night Purple as our third time doing that event this past spring, Mental Health Awareness Week was a new one run through the middle school and through the Danvers Cares Youth Leadership Board as well this past year, and we're going to continue expanding on our middle school and high school youth leadership opportunities, a bit beyond what we've been doing, so please do hold on to that for more. You know, as always, we make sure that everything that we're doing is based in evidence-based practices. That is, you know, that's always the tightrope that we walk as educators and community folks, youth-serving folk, is making sure that everything that we're doing is, you know, evidence-based, but then when we are talking to the families, that it's in a way that's practical and easy for them to absorb. So that's been a large goal again of ours, is making sure that, doing the background work to make sure that everything we're doing is on solid footing, but then doing our best to translate that to the parents and to the community to make sure that we're serving their needs and talking in a way that's easily acceptable for them. So I think I'll probably just sort of open it up to you folks, I hope that you had a chance to go through the action plan, I'd love to answer any questions you have. Yeah?
Does anybody have any questions, comments in general? Anybody want to start? Eric?
Yeah, I like what I see. I'm glad you're continuing some of the programs that have been successful in the past. It appears as though this is, my sense is that this is a more formal approach to your planning and your strategy, and that we're trying to align it more with the overall goals of the district. Am I reading that, would you say that's an accurate statement? It feels that way.
Absolutely. I mean, that was our, that was our direct intention, everything down to making sure that we're using the same action plan that the other administrators are working on. If we're able to streamline and make sure that we are all using the same tools, and that we're all using the same language, in this case, we're talking about the Department of Education's five core competencies of social emotional learning, that's something that you're going to be hearing about how our educators are translating that to their students over the coming year. So our job is to carry that message out into the community.
I was going to say, I think that's, that is likely to work very well in terms of the curriculum piece, but don't lose sight of the other stakeholders that we've worked with over the years to make sure that they're still invested in the planning that you're doing, and that's really my only comment, and good luck, I hope you have a great year, Lyle.
Thank you. I definitely would like to speak to that and say that's absolutely going to be especially important now, as you, when you look at the developmental asset framework, those external assets really are centered on having community buy-in and community support, because if you don't have the community on your side, and knowing what, you know, what's expected of them, and what kind of boundaries we're setting for our youth, then how are we expecting them to be implemented? So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lyle. I'm all set, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. Dave?
No, I don't have anything additional. Thanks, Lyle. Look forward to working with you.
Chip?
Yeah, well, so I've had the fortune of being part of the Danvers Cares team representing us for a while. This does a very good job of addressing a couple of needs that we saw. One was, how do we expand more and be viewed as a community resource rather than just students, right? And so there are a lot of opportunities for our community partners to work with us on that, so I'd like to encourage all of them to definitely do that. The other piece I will mention is, there's a lot of flexibility built into this plan. We don't know what issues students and others in the community are going to face in five years, but what I particularly liked about this was, there are institutional and process programs in place that as we are sort of the headlights as to what's coming up, we're able to address that and sort of be a mouthpiece to the community and see that. And so that's really, when I was reading this and then talking to Lyle and the team about it, you know, we want to make sure that that is projected out to the community as well. They can come to us and say, you know, what's going on, what am I seeing, I'm seeing some, you know, behaviors in my kids, is this all right? That's really where we want to go, kind of in the future, so thank you for that, and thanks for the team.
Hey, Beth?
I just want to thank everyone that worked on this new strategic plan, I think it was like a whole, at least a whole year in the planning, and a lot of people, community members, teachers, administrators, students, I just want to thank everyone for working on this. And Danvers Cares is such an important resource, not only for the community, but for the schools, for parents, for everyone, so I'm really looking forward to this new school year and working with Lyle as well, and wish you good luck, and thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Lyle.
Thank you, Lyle. Okay, next we have Danvers High School updates. It's been a busy summer at Danvers High School also, so Jason Columbino, our high school principal, is going to bring you through introducing our new high school curriculum director, talk about senior internships, and we also have the therapeutic program that during the summer, we really worked on looking at needs of students and preparing for the school year, and then I'll talk about updating our parent teacher conference date, and we have that in for a vote later in the meeting, again, due to the state election coming up in November. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Dr. Dana. Thank you, and good evening. I wanted to start with, we're really excited to be able to announce that we hired a new high school curriculum director, so thank you to Mary, Ellen, Julie, Sean, Katrina, everybody, all the curriculum directors and Danvers High leadership team that gave input during that search process. Amy brings a wealth of knowledge to the Curriculum Center and to Danvers High School. She was a social studies teacher in Lawrence, as well as a principal and assistant principal in Wilmington and Beverly, respectively, and is current, or was most recently at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as a Leadership Effectiveness Director, and so we are thrilled to have her on board. Today was her first day, so go easy on her. So, Amy Gerard. Welcome.
How come she doesn't already know the way up to the podium?
I just wanted to thank everybody, particularly the hiring committee, I'm just so excited to be part of the Danvers community and be back on the North Shore. As Jason said, I was in Beverly, and this community has such a fine reputation that I'm just excited to join it. So thank you for being so welcoming on my first day, and having a meeting on my behalf now. And I just look forward to working with all of you this year, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Amy.
Welcome.
I'm going to be like a short-term emcee for tonight, so the next item is the senior internship, so we did have a, we had another successful year for the senior internship this year at Danvers High School, and we did, as part of that, we sent out a survey to families to get their input on what's working, what could get better, and so Sean Amberly, our assistant principal for the 11th and 12th graders, is going to come up and go over some of those results.
Thank you, Jason. As Jason said, this year for the first time, we took a survey, we sent out a survey to all the senior parents regarding the senior internship. The results were overall very positive. The data that we collected indicates parents knew where their students were interning, precisely what they were doing. They were all strongly agreed or agreed that the expectations were clear, and some of the data that we collected regarding whether they felt that their children, their seniors, had a positive experience. And you can see by the graph on the screen there, about 80%, low 80%, either agreed or strongly agreed. Also, the majority of parents responding to the survey, excuse me, were in agreement that the internship, the senior internship, was aligned to their post-secondary plans, their child's post-secondary plans. A couple of the survey questions centered on strengths and weaknesses, and specifically how we can do better, how we can make this internship program better. And the biggest takeaway from the comments and the feedback from parents was about starting this process a little bit earlier. So our intention this year, excuse me, is to begin, it's a hard time of the year in the fall with seniors applying to college and playing sports, but our intention is to have the internship program be a bigger part of the school year to start off. We'll be doing that through the advisory program, and also as well as connecting the already established relationship from community service into potential internships for the seniors. So the seniors have already primarily done their community service, have established relationships in the community, and kind of connecting that to their internship, but doing it in the fall rather than in the second the fall rather than in the second semester of the year to prevent any kids from running around last minute to try to find their internships. So overall, again, the parental feedback was very positive. Parents were, were very impressed with how interested their children were. The reports coming backwards that they're working in their field, making connections, and really the biggest consistency about improvement or growth was about starting it a little earlier in the senior year. Is there any questions?
Questions? Dave?
Yes, Sean, how many parents responded to the survey?
I believe we had 55, Dave. 55 total. So certainly an area for growth there as well.
Right. And we, that was just sent out by email, correct?
Jason sent out a Google, Google survey.
Okay. I remember getting that. And are we, is this our discussion on this, or is this just the overview? Because I know we had talked about maybe doing a deeper discussion in September.
Yes. So what we would like to do is present today the overviews, have people really start to think about it. And Dave, you've always been wonderful by giving us the feedback of looking at the internship and wanting to make it as strong as possible for all of our students. And we're not there yet to have it to be a really good experience for all of our students. And then through the Policy Subcommittee, where it really is part of Handbook Program of Studies, Policy Subcommittee should go in-depth also during a Subcommittee meeting or a couple of meetings over the fall also. And then the last part is looking at that, this year we'd like to have, we have asked two of our high school students to be the representatives to the school committee, Claire Matt and Cynthia Boyd, and in their work to be able to come back and to share, whether through Policy Subcommittee and working on school council and other advisory pieces at the high school, to be able to give you some of the voices of our high school students and to share that with you, so also to give those experience. So we really want to have it to be an ongoing conversation and discussion with school committee over the fall to continue making improvements to the internship program.
Okay. That sounds good. Yeah, I'd like to see the actual, you know, results of the survey, to look through those. And just, you know, my whole thought on the internship program is, you know, we've been doing it for a few years now, and we started it as a optional program for seniors, and I'm very supportive of that. When we turn it into a mandatory thing, that's when it's, I think, you have issues with kids getting out there, doing things that they're doing just for the sake of doing an internship. So I just want to look at that and see what makes sense going forward.
Good.
Jeff?
No, no questions.
Mary Beth?
Nothing. Thank you.
Eric?
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and I kind of agree with Dave, and we can talk about this more next month. But the couple of things that I see that probably need a little bit of work are, the kids that do a lot of APs, they don't really have an internship even though they're supposed to go somewhere. And, and so I don't really know how that's going to work, but, but I know for a fact that, you know, kids called me and said, can I come to your office for a week? And you couldn't do anything with them anyway, because it's not enough time. And then the other part of the, which is the mandatory part of it, which I think Dave has referenced, is that the internship works well for a lot of kids. I agree with that, and I've talked to a lot of them, and I've heard from a lot of them. But some of them are just, you know, it's kind of a joke. And, you know, it's because they had to do something. And so, so we do have to talk a little bit about that because, because it doesn't work for everybody, and I think you really have to be motivated to want to do it for it to really work. So, so again, we'll talk about it more next month, but those are, those are my thoughts. And overall, again, I, I think it's worked well for so many kids, but there are some, some things that, that I think we could work on tightening, tightening up in there, so.
Some alternatives. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. The students with the APs is definitely something that we've been thinking about, so longer term too, and building in some more flexibility, whether it's something that, if it's an option that they could do it, like, some of the feedback from parents too, is can they do it over there? Summer of their junior year, or some other timeframe that works, because the timing between the end of the AP exams and graduation, it's, it's too tight. It's like a week and a half, two weeks. And also, longer term, to how to build it into starting those conversations on sort of a broad area, or having students getting into pathways or career interests earlier, you know, freshman sophomore year, so that, like Sean said, that their advisory is connected and organized around their career interests, the community service work is connected to that, so that it's not a end of a senior year, which is great, and it is positive for a lot of students. But just in agreement with everyone's take, to take it to the next step. So I look forward to those conversations. And the third item that we have is we are, in the spring and in the summer, we're able to create a therapeutic learning center that we're going to pilot for the next school year in collaboration with Student Services, which we're really excited about. We think it's a great structured way to meet the needs of a lot of students. So Dr. Katrina, as far as we'll speak to that.
So I'm very excited to be working with any of the students who end up in this program. We're calling it the TLC for now, that we really haven't settled in too much of a title, but this is meant for any student in the building, regardless of their, their special ed services, regardless of their class level, regardless, it's open to anyone who needs it, who requires help with their social, emotional, or mental needs. I think it's worth saying that if somebody broke their leg, we're going to make them participate in gym right away. And the same thing happens when you have some sort of mental health issue that's going on. Sometimes you can't get right back into your academics as quickly as you'd like to. And I think that a lot of our students, even though our teachers and our support staff are great at being able to tell them, we want to support you and help you and take your time, students feel the need to come out and do everything all at once. And this is our opportunity to be able to give them a space where they are able to work through what they need to work through in a timely manner and know that there is a dedicated place for them to do it in the building. So some of these students will have been previously hospitalized. Some of these students will have additional support outside of school, and some of this may come up based on team meetings because of behaviors that have been seen by social workers in the building and guidance. So you can't elect to be in this program. It kind of comes up. And most of the time, our support staff, who is wonderful, our guidance counselors and social workers, do a great job finding students' support outside of school, but some students do need more support. So I, for the most part, we were thinking a lot about students who end up hospitalized out. You've been out for 10 days, and you have to come back in the building, so you've missed 10 days of all of your classes. You've missed, like, so right there, that's a lot of work. You've missed the support of that, those classes having an active time, and now you have to come back in. You may be on new medication. You may have new therapists. You may have all of these new outside forces, and that's a lot of stress on stress. So our goal is to help those students re-acclimate to the building, as well as support those additional needs however we can. So for some of these students, this may be an all-day visit, because sometimes you have an off day, and you need to just take the time and collect yourself, but you're in the building, and we can work with you one-on-one. And some, for some students, this could just be a late entry to the building and a place to collect themselves and then go off to class, and we may not see them again for the rest of the day. But I find that a lot of the students that I've worked with, and this will help us with our attendance rates, because a lot of those students think black or white, like, if I'm not here, then I'm not coming, but this will give them the opportunity to reset. So maybe I can try a class, and then if I still don't feel well, I can go back to this location. And then I can try another class, or I can wait where I am until I'm ready to do it and work on what I have for academics. So the actual location was chosen in the building, near a door for students who have anxiety, like to see the outside, or need to enter at a different location, so that the staff can greet them there and walk them to that particular room. Our staff includes a social worker who will have those students as their caseload, so that way they're able to talk to their therapists and outside people, so they have solid knowledge of what that student's been doing, as well as what that student has in and outside of the school. We have an aide who is also social, emotional trained. She has gone to, for her master's in social work, so she has a great knowledge of what mental health looks like and what she should sort of be looking for, and be able to kind of work with the students and develop the rapport that's needed, so that when the student says, I'm fine, she knows that there's actually maybe more behind that, and be able to work with them. And we also have set up a rotation of staff in their core subject areas. So that way, and it follows the schedule, but that's beside the point, you'll be able to stop in, and if you've done your English reading and you've caught up, but you want to be able to talk to somebody about the book that you're reading and go through the questions and review it before you go back to the class, so that you have a little sense of what's coming, what you've missed, and be able to jump in and not feel like, oh, I've missed all of this information. They'll be able to have a little bit more confidence going back in. And for me, when I think of that, I think of the students who say, I've missed a whole week of math. I have no idea what's going on. They'll be able to sit with the math teacher, and he'll be able to say, okay, we're going to go over these sections, and we're going to work on this till you get it, and then we'll get you back into that environment, so that you can practice it and feel like you're part of the class. So our ultimate goals with this program, we are going to collect the data. It's going to be, the data's going to look different for everyone, because not everyone goes in there for the same reason. You could use the word anxiety, but anxiety has 1,000 different faces. So we're going to be collecting data. It's going to look based on, we can look at grades, we can look at attendance, but it's really going to be individualized and helping the students get back into their full academics. So we don't want them to feel like this is their forever safety net. We want them to regain their confidence in themselves, in their academics, and be able to return to a full class set, whatever that may look like, and without rushing them into, back into the mainstream. So for protocol, because it's going to be, there are going to be students who need this. It's going to come from social workers, it'll come from guidance. And unfortunately, sometimes a student goes out for a few days, and we don't know where they are, and someone calls home, and we find out that they've been hospitalized. Upon re-entry to the building, they're required to have a meeting with their assistant principal, a social worker, and their guidance counselor, and their parents. And at that meeting, we usually call it a safety meeting, so we can determine what's going to be the safest for them. And we also have one of the nurses there in case there's some medication involved. We can determine what's going to be best for them, and this will be put on the table. It's certainly not required, so students can, it can be an option for them if they'd like it, but we're not going to force them to participate in it. But it will always be on the table for the students, because we want to be able to support them however possible. Do you have any questions?
Jeff?
Yes, although some of these might be, I apologize if they're simple questions, but, so when you say hospitalized, do you mean like, like someone breaks their leg, or it's mental?
I've had students who have taken a bottle of pills, and then they've had to go and relearn their coping skills and learn how to manage that, and then have to be medicated for, for a hormone imbalance. And coming back into the building, having that, first of all, they're afraid that their teachers know and are now judging them, so they have to get back re-acclimated to coming to the building. The medication has to be stabilized, so they may not feel good physically until that happens. And then they've missed, like, six classes. So now they're sitting here feeling like, I have to do all of this, and these people know that I've been out, and all my friends know that I've been out. And that can be a very overwhelming feeling, and a lot of students start to hesitate to want to come back, period, because that's a lot to deal with.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's, and everybody's story's very different when they come back in, so nobody in this room's going to look alike. And that's part, that's really the hardest part, is that everybody gets, everybody has a different story to tell in that location. So their trauma is different. But helping them overcome that, however that may be, is really what the ultimate goal is.
So every time I hear these, these, these programs, I say, this is a, this is a great idea. Like, why don't we do this already? But what do we do, or what did we do previously for students like that?
We had the pieces in place, but it was really difficult, because you would have, we have three social workers at the high school, and sometimes one child would be in that office for two hours in the morning. And that meant that other students couldn't be serviced, because that student was there. So, and then we had other students who then would be displaced, and then you could have another student who was having a concern down at the nurse's office. This then centralizes everyone, and it keeps all of that, I don't want to call them data, but it keeps all that information in the same place, so that way we can work with all of them at the same time and be able to help them. Because if they're sitting in guidance waiting to talk to a social worker, they're not being educated, they're not receiving support, and they're not being able to move forward. So this then gives them some place where they're able to either decompress and hopefully rework themselves out, or we have a teacher there who will be able to do academics with them, or there will be a social worker available to be able to decompress and figure out what exactly needs to be worked on.
That is great. Wow. I mean, it's a terrific solution, you know, with almost, you know, be able to process and certainly treat more students. That's terrific. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Beth?
So is there a limited number of students that is going to be invited into this, or...
Not really by invitation. It's more of an as-needed basis. So I would, I, for example, as we were going through the end of last year, I was keeping data with some of the teachers as to what was going on and who was out. I had about five students on my, on, between my two grades alone, who would immediately qualify for that. So, and they would have been able to, if you put, the ultimate goal with, for this would be to be able to have them phase out at some point, so that way they're, they're back and they're doing what they need to do and not relying on it as much. And that being said, for every five, you're going to get another five that are going to want, that are going to have to cycle through. So it's going to be, it's almost kind of like a rotating door, and I hate saying that, but you're, that's really what you're hoping for.
Exactly. But at what point, at what number, say you get to, that you might have to add additional staff or support to that, that room for that day, or, like, how flexible is that? Like, you know, I'm just...
I think it's, I actually think it's pretty flexible, because the students come in at different points in the day. So I don't ever expect more than five people to be in that room at any time. So some of them, some of them, I had a student who was coming in at 9:30, and he was able to bring himself back in a little earlier every day, to the point where he was showing up on time. So we didn't have to worry about waiting for him to come through. So he then kind of, you know, siphoned off, and then you would have somebody else who would take, who may take that space.
Right.
But there are multiple adults in the room at any given time, which is also great, because somebody, we have some, we have multiple people who'll be able to work on multiple topics.
Right. So they're able, they're referred to the program, the room?
More so referred.
So if a student came in in the morning, because it already happens, and say they're already in some kind of crisis, or they just can't go to class right away, where do they go right now? They go to guidance?
Usually check in with the social worker. Or they come into our office, or they come into the nurse, depending on, depending on where they are.
Right.
So that's...
And then if, for those, for this, being referred to this program, you have to have a meeting with the family?
We always do a re-entry meeting with the student if they've been hospitalized, or if we see that there is some sort of major change happening, just so that way everyone is on the same page, and we're all aware of what the student's going to need moving forward.
But they don't necessarily have to have been hospitalized to go to it.
No, no. You could have someone who, you know, they're just, they're starting medication, we're see this path starting, they have a therapist, we're starting to trend downward, it's very clear that this is what's going to, like, if we don't start helping now, this is where it's going, then that's where we would like to step in and be able to offer support.
And if the student is in this room, there's communication between, like, their classroom teacher?
Absolutely.
And then the classroom teacher has an understanding that, okay, he wasn't in my class, or she wasn't in my class today, but they were in the TLC center, and they were...
Yes. We have protocols set up, and there will be early-year meetings with those teachers, as well as those aides, so that way everybody understands what those protocols are, because more so we want this to be safe. We want somebody to know where the students are at all time, and if somebody's in transition, we want to know that they're moving from room one to room two, so that way, everybody, everybody is secure in the program. There's definitely a level of confidentiality that goes with that. I definitely think that the staff understands the, the deep work that they're doing with this, and they're looking forward to doing it with these students.
And then one other question was, if a parent is watching this tonight, is hearing about this, and feel this might be a great option for my child, is it something they can reach out to the administration?
They absolutely can reach out to me, and we can...
Talk about it.
Start setting up, yeah, conversations. And at the, at like, the minimum, we should at least meet with a social worker, so we can start talking about concerns and what we should be looking out for as they're re-entering to the school year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric?
I am really excited about this. I think, I said before, the biggest change I've seen on school committee over a long time is the greater number of students who are coming into the schools on a daily basis with needs that have nothing to do with education and everything to do with their emotional standpoint and, and what they're going through maybe at home, or what they're going through internally. And if they can't get past that, it seems to me any opportunities for learning are just hindered incredibly. And it calls for a different approach, it calls for a forward-thinking approach and something innovative. And I see all of that in the materials you shared with us about this program. And there may be some bumps in the road, you know, it'll work better for some than for others, but the fact that this sounds like an approach that can be individualized for students based on what their particular needs are, really holds a lot of promise, I think. And, you know, will help an awful lot of students. So, I hope you'll keep us posted through the year as to how this develops and how it goes. I think it's a great idea, and just so pleased that you're going to try this.
Thank you, and I hope to be able to bring back data at some point when we've had some students.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dave?
Yeah, I agree completely with Eric. I think this is awesome. You know, ties in perfectly to the strategic, where the strategic plan's going with social emotional learning, what Lyle talked about for Danvers Cares. To Eric's point, you know, someone can't learn unless they're comfortable, and if they're so anxious or whatever's happening, that they're so worried about what's going on elsewhere, or even in their own mind, they're not focused. So, I think that's huge, and I think it's going to help a lot with the, the growing school avoidance issue as well.
Yes.
I think that's going to help tremendously. I'm wondering, is this been modeled anywhere else, and have we been able to take? Yes.
Yes.
Those best practices, is what I was going to ask.
[inaudible] It's not meant to be anybody's fault. This thing, I want to go with the...
Right.
That's not really off, but it should really require a space to be okay socially, socially learned, you know? That's the whole thing. We found that we had quite a few students, I'm going to point out, like, four or five students who needed to actually go to an administrative space because they couldn't finish in the high school, because we didn't have something like this as to further as we need to. So, I think, thank God, that you're not going to do this.
And as well as Swambskut, we had at Salem High School, I was the housemaster there, and they had a program called Hawthorne, and it worked the same way, where students who had had trauma, and, again, that covers so many different aspects. They were offered a program, and they did the check-ins at the end of every semester to see whether or not the student still needed to qualify for that. And they, they followed through with having a social worker there, so, not so much with the core curriculum pieces, but again, it, it is a model that's been used at other schools, and it is efficient for most students.
Great. And you said, did you say that there are going to be teachers that are going to be coming in during, like, their planning time, or their downtime to help?
There are teachers who have that assigned as their, as a prep for them, so that way during that particular block. So, like, A block might be English.
Okay.
So, I used to teach English, so if you came in and you're like, I'm in the middle of Catcher in the Rye, and I have no idea what's going on, but I read it, we'd be able to sit down and talk about it. And I'd be able to look through the work and say, okay, here's where you are, you know, I know you had an essay due, how does that look? Can I see it? Because I'd be able to gauge for that student where they are, and then be able to work with them, knowing them, because I've been able to see them every once in a while, and be able to communicate back to their teacher and explain where they were. Because sometimes when that student walks into the classroom, and you say, how's the essay going? They go, I'm fine! And you say that's, that you haven't even started it, and that's because, you know, there's so much else going on, where that teacher in the room will be able to say, actually, they've gotten some of the ideas down, but we haven't gotten fully there, but she's been working on it, you know, and trying to get those down. And that piece of communication is, it is so important between the staff members, because that really, it's, it just speaks to, to being able to help the student, because that, again, that I'm fine doesn't tell you much. And they may be smiling, but that doesn't mean there isn't something else going on.
So, how does that work, though, in terms of, you know, if, for example, English is A block, you know, and I come in C block, and I'm worried about my essay, how, you know, it just, with all of the number of subjects that are being taught in the school, how can you kind of match up with the kids' needs?
We do have two academic support teachers who also taught, teach or taught English and history, so they have great literacy skills as well, so they'd be able to, I think math is probably the only one that, for, at least for me as a, as a former English teacher, that specialized teacher would need to be there for that block.
Right.
And then if there is a situation where we need to, most of our staff is very flexible and helpful, I'm sure someone would be willing to take some time to be able to sit down and explain with a student.
Yeah, this is great. I think it's much needed, and I'm glad it's being done. I guess my only concern is staffing, and with all of the pressure with the social workers, you know, like you said, if someone's taking up two hours of the social work time, and we don't, you know, they can't help several other students that might need them during that time, that might be a staffing issue. And I'm a little concerned that we have someone with a master's in social work as an aide. That seems like, that should be a social work position that's in there in covering that room, so there's this, or area, so there's a social worker in there for the day, not an aide, but...
In, in a perfect, like, situation, that would be ideal.
Right.
So, right now, we're lucky that we have her. So, and I think from here, we'll see where we're going, and then I'll hit Jason up on the budget.
I think we would all agree that we would find the budget for something that, that's that important.
I think we have to remember it's a pilot year, and, and, like I say, they'll be...
No, I just, I don't want to lose a, a master's in social work because we're paying her, you know, $3 an hour.
Right.
No, no, we don't, we pay minimum wage.
Oh, we do, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
So, I mostly agree with everything that everybody said, and there's probably, and I'm probably just not, I'm trying, I'm just trying to think through a couple of things. So, it sounds like, and I'm sure you have answers for this, but it sounds like, you know, you have some kids in here who could have some serious issues. And, and you could have multiple kids in the room with serious issues with social workers and discussions going on. So, I keep thinking to myself, okay, are there privacy and/or confidentiality issues that need to be, we need to be concerned with? Because you certainly can't have conversations that can be heard by other people if it's something very, that shouldn't be heard by other people.
Right. No, I agree with you. We've set up a, one of our classrooms, there is going to be a partition in there to separate, but that doesn't necessarily block sound. Our social workers do have their own office as well, so they would be more than, I know they would also be more than welcoming upstairs. So, if they, if the student really wanted to have a conversation that was in depth, it would be in their best interest to go to the office instead of having it in that room.
Okay. And, and again, I'm, I'm just kind of thinking through a little bit here, is, is just the fact that they're going into the room, is that, is that creating any type of, of issue with, with confidentiality, or with privacy, or, or is it, is there a stigma attached to it? I mean, is there, how is, how is it going to be addressed?
I think being new, there won't be a stigma attached to it. I think that this community has a great way of helping each other, so I don't see that becoming like, an issue amongst the students. If anything, I could see students trying to figure out, how do I get in there? Because everybody in there is, like, really helpful. But, that, I do, I do recognize that that's a concern.
And I don't mean, I, I think I used the wrong term, too. I don't really mean a stigma so much as, as, like, a kid doesn't want to go in there because people are going to know he has an issue, or she has an issue.
I...
That's kind of where I'm...
I can understand that, because this is open to, like, every student, and I can think of, you know, going through high school, I knew students, and I was one of them that had anxiety, and I was in all the AP classes, and for me, I would have been like, no, I can't miss time in that. I had, like, I can't go in there, I need to be over here. And if I go in there, people are going to think that I'm having a meltdown and can't keep up over here. I would be in two minds there. I think that's a conversation that would happen with everyone at the table for that safety plan, so that they knew that it was on the table, and when they feel that they need to be there. It's not required, but if they're in the moment, and they know that this is coming, and you can feel it, that's the time to go to that room. Or that's the time to go up to your social worker's room, so that way we can, we can then work through that. So, it may not necessarily be going to that room. For some students, walking into that room will be as far as they get for the day. So, and it's going to be okay.
Yeah, no, and I, and I, and again, I, I, listen, I, I think it's great. I think, I think it's something that's needed. I'm just, I, and I guess I'm a worst-case scenario thinker, so, and that, maybe that's some of the legal training, but basically, I'm thinking to myself, like, somebody says something to somebody, and it's heard, and then it goes out into the school, and then you have an issue. You know, so I think you have to be very careful about when there's any, any...
Absolutely.
Sensitive discussions, and, and, and I think the staff needs to make sure that they don't have those where, where it's in, in hearing distance of other people.
Absolutely.
Because that's something where, where you could, it gets back and gets around, and then a parent gets upset about it, and now you have somebody making a complaint. And, and that's what I would worry. I mean, I, I love it overall, but I'm just a little concerned about that if we're not really careful about that. So, that's...
I agree. The confidentiality is a huge piece. So, amongst the students, because most of the students in there recognize that they would not want their information and their story told to other people.
Absolutely.
So, those are actually, they actually form a really good community and bond with each other, so...
And it's only going to work if that's the case.
Yes.
But, you know, again, just...
But still, there's always...
Yeah, I think you just got to be careful. So, other than that, though, I, I think it's great, and like Jeff says, it's one of these things, like, we should have thought of it before, but I'm glad we thought about it now. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you to our high school team for pulling in, and you really see in all the coordination, so a team effort, collaboration, people working together to put programs together for all of our students in meeting their needs. The last piece is that we'll have later in our agenda, asking a vote from the school committee to update our school calendar, to change the parent-teacher conferences for only the high school to the election day in November, so that way, again, the high school can be used for the election, for the town election, and have parent-teacher conferences versus a school day here. So, we'll be bringing that up later in the agenda. Thank you. Okay, the next three updates are just sort of quick updates as a preview as to the coming school year, professional development. Mary?
Sure. All right, good evening. This year, we have a new model for professional development. It came in last year's teacher contract. So, we actually moved the in-service days out of the school year calendar and out to the beginning of the school year. So, teachers return to us on August 29th and 30th, so Wednesday and Thursday, they'll be getting their in-service training. It gives us a great opportunity to get them brought up to speed on the initiatives that we're working on this year, and get some, a jumpstart on them. So, those are required days that teachers will be attending. And then prior to that, on Monday and Tuesday, we are offering our usual optional professional development days that we've always done in the past. So, there's a lot of offerings for teachers, and they are, reflect this new strategic plan. And so, there's a nice mix of social-emotional learning topics, some student engagement and project-based learning topics, and then also really some core curriculum, because we're going to be working on building that foundation for the curriculum and get them going as a school year, as they start off the school year and be ready to go. So, without going into every detail of what every group is doing, it's a general overview.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Nope.
We're all good? Okay.
And also add that we did work with our secretaries, our cafeteria workers, and our teacher aides units, too, so everyone is coming back before Labor Day. All right. Keith, we have Smith School update.
So, it was a busy summer with the Smith School, and we had a, a public meeting with DTAC around traffic, which was one of the concerns that some of the abutters rose. We had that meeting during July, and we were at MSBA for the Facilities Assessment Subcommittee to really go through our educational plan that we submitted to them, and our preferred schematic report, looking at what options the town wanted to move forward with. That was at the end of July. During August, we met with a landscape architect and HVAC again, to look at the systems in the building. The school building committee met on August 3rd, and then MSBA will be taking their formal vote to move us from preferred schematic report into schematic design, which is the next big milestone. Tried to not even write out the abbreviations, because I will forget the words. So, that meeting will be on 8/29, so that will be next week, so we look forward to that.
Okay. Thanks, anybody? Everybody good? Okay, and thanks, Keith.
And then the last update is the annual DPW tour and safety meeting.
So, we're still working on coordinating the annual tour, but we look forward to also being able to share some of the exciting projects. The September meeting is part of our opening of schools report, and then tomorrow, we will be having our annual safety meeting with police and fire, with the captains and chiefs and school administration, just to go over our annual review of all of our policies and procedures, and lockdowns, and all of that stuff to make sure we're ready for the school year.
Great.
Great, thank you, Keith. Unfinished business.
Thank you. Two items this evening. The superintendent recommends the approval of the proposed 2018-19 pre-K to 12 student-parent handbooks for a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. And the second item is the superintendent recommends the approval of the revised 2018-19 school district calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, just have a question. Any thought behind moving everyone to that date, as, you know, so that way parents have kids in elementary school and in high school for childcare versus separating them out?
We did, we did this a couple years ago, and we didn't receive any comments back from changing only the high school, so I thought we would try it one more time. We are the actual trimester in that middle school in elementary on a trimester, so the December date still really works well for them.
Okay.
With having teacher, parent-teacher conferences, and the high school has the semesters and the, in the quarters. So, that was looking at it. Part of it is, again, that change in the contract that we spoke about earlier, sort of catching up with us with the state election the first year that we were doing this, working with having every child's middle school and high school having a Chromebook, moving Chromebooks to the elementary, but we really weren't ready to call it, let's say, an e-learning day just yet. But, hopefully for two more years, when we get to a, a national election, we'll have other ideas for what we can have happen with our schools on election days.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions, actually, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business.
Great, the new business, thank you so much. We have two exciting pieces to share with the strategic plan, and then our school improvement plan. So, we have our administrative team here with us this evening. Again, we'd like to thank everyone, the coordination of pulling this all together, the, the timing of last year, it was like, everything came together. So, with the Smith School visioning and the Smith School project, and working with Dr. Frank Locker, that work there, again, we always do it as a community, so from the Smith School, it was really looking at elementary, what do, what do we want to see for all of our elementary schools? We moved that to working with middle school and high school, the administrative team, and then ending in the end of September, I'm sorry, end of May, with a community visioning session, and having that. So, in the report that you have for the strategic plan, you see all the members of our community that have participated over the last year in the visioning. So, with that, also, a year ago, last summer, I was able to participate in planning for success with the Department of Education, which really looks at the, the format of streamlining, really getting to a document that probably isn't 60 pages long, but really, what's the, the heart of the, the work that we're doing, and making it a format that all of us can be using on an ongoing basis. So, that's what you have today as our first draft, and Mary's going to be talking about where we are in this process, and having a grant that we were also able to get, just sort of in the springtime last year, as a planning grant. So, we really see this first year of the, the next strategic plan as really a planning year, pulling it all together, and then having our outcomes, everything formalized with surveys for years two through five. for years two through five. So with that, again, a really huge thank you to everyone that put this together. And we're going to turn it over to Mary to bring us through our presentation.
Okay, great. So in the agenda, you have both the actual draft of the strategic plan and then you have a presentation. So I'm going through the presentation. But if you look on the second page of the strategic plan, you'll see all the members that have given input into the plan. And as you can see, there's quite a few people on that list. But I think there's like three main groups that we've worked with. One is through the visioning process. We, as Dr. Dana just said, all the groups that were, got together to do the visioning, there were 93 different people involved in that process. So that's quite a good number to have input from. She also mentioned that we have the Essex County Learning Community Grant. We have that with the Rockport Public Schools, Gloucester, Beverly, Swambscott, ourselves, and then Haverhill. Our group of six districts that get together. It started, we started working on it in May, and we'll work through December. It is a planning grant, and I'll move forward to the next slide to show you that we're focused on three things in this grant. We're working on tier-one academics. We're working on social-emotional learning and behavior, and thinking of behavior as a tiered intervention program as well. And then really looking at cultural competence and proficiency. So these are three areas that we definitely need to start to shift to look at, and we've done that in our strategic plan. We have two groups. We have a leadership team that meets once a month, and that team is made up with myself, Adam Federico, Mary Tatum, as well as four teachers representing K through 12 and regular ed and special education. So we have Josh Jordan, Mary Franz, Priya Plummer, and Caitlin Resnick. So that group was, we're kind of like the lead. And then the other group that works with this are teachers that decided to focus on a specific area and really, you know, deeply research that area with the other districts and come up with recommendations for our school district. So those teachers are Cindy Grady, Jeff Bartlett, and Alex Grover that are working on social-emotional learning and behavior. The tier-one academics group is Tenaya St. Pierre, Christina Beecher, and Will Ford. And then the cultural proficiency is Linda Armstrong, Juliana Robbins, and Kristin Agalovitz. So this is a great group of teachers that are highly energized. And in fact, that team, the topical group team, went to a two-day summer institute at Endicott College this August. So they are ready to report to us, and we're looking forward to meeting them in September. So that, you know, we're in midstream of doing our research, but three things that really have come out of this work is that we're looking to move towards more and full inclusion of students and really working on co-teaching models with seamless roles. And it's not just regular education, it's special education. We're looking at having social workers in classrooms as well as ESL teachers. So that'll be, that's a recommendation the team is making, and we'll be thinking about more of that as we move through the school year. They also are looking at the social-emotional and that students are aware of their social-emotional needs and can advocate for themselves and actually employ their own strategies. So they've learned strategies to help them deal with some of the social-emotional issues that they may have. And then the last one is teachers have knowledge and skills that leads to a sense of self-efficacy so that they are able to, they understand the skills and strategies and are able to employ them with students. So those are the three that we're looking at now. We're going to get more detail into that as we move through the first few months of school with all of it culminating in December. So as we went through the visioning process, it became very clear, and I think some of you were on the visioning teams, that there were two strong, like pillars or themes that came out of the work, that we really wanted to work on student engagement and project-based learning became such a strong cry from every group that we worked with. The energy around that was amazing. And then the other one was that there was a real need to work on social-emotional learning, that that definitely was something that needed to be addressed in the district and that we needed to have a more comprehensive and coherent plan for social-emotional learning. So we kind of had those two themes that we want to work on. As Lyle brought up earlier, if you look under social-emotional learning, we really are going to be working towards, working on those five competencies. And we're lucky that some of the programs that we're working on for social-emotional that we already have in the district work on those competencies. So from those two themes, student engagement and social-emotional learning, we ended up with three strategic objectives. And, you know, one is clearly, the first one, safe and supportive learning environments is our SEL. But when it came to student engagement, we felt like there really needed to be two objectives aligned at that, for that area. And it was because we really needed to solidify the foundation that we already have. We have lots of student-centered curriculums in the district, and we really needed to continue our work with teachers to be delivering them in a student-centered way. Sometimes we tend to be teacher-directed and kids are not able to do the exploration that they should be doing in the classroom so, or doing, you know, really digging deeply into their own work. And so we felt like that was a really great, would be good to put together as another objective. The other part that we need to do is firm up our tier-one RTI system for academics. So that is part of that objective work that we need there. And I'm ahead of myself. You'll see that in a few minutes. But when we started to come together and build the plan, as Dr. Dana was trained from the Department of Ed, they gave us templates that we should be working through. So the first thing is the mission statement. And, you know, when you have something that so many people know and [laughter] and live and breathe as, you know, Adam Federico and Sean Emberly can recite it, you know, recite it every day on the school announcements, and the kids all are able to say it. And it really is our mission of our schools. It hasn't changed. So we really felt like we wanted to keep that in place and not change it. So it really sums up the work we are doing. The vision, I'm not reading this to you, but it's there for you to read. But we really took our, again, the vision for our students, we didn't, you know, attain that, you know, altruistic vision that we did have in our plan for, you know, 2018. But what we took out was the part that wasn't about kids. I think we felt like that the work we are doing are in service of our students, and it's all about our students. And so we, what we did was we brought it down to two paragraphs to really capture the work we are doing for students and with students. So if we go into those each objectives, I was ahead of myself in my presentation, and I already talked to you about some of this. So under the SEL, there's a wheel there that shows you the five competencies. And again, the work we are doing at each of the levels aligns with that, and we're just working to make sure there's coherence between elementary, middle, and high school. So that will be the work that we'll be doing over the years of the strategic plan. So at elementary, we have, we are reinvigorating the open circle, social-emotional learning program. And we also have Olveas Anti-Bullying. At the middle school, we have Project Hawk and Olveas. Again, they already were working on a lot of the social-emotional issues in that, in their work. And then at the high school, they have the advisory program, and they do a little bit of the Olveas Anti-Bullying program. So that was, that's definitely more work to come. The objective two is around, is the coherent curriculum and instruction. So we're really working on fidelity to the curriculums that we do use, and there's the listing of them, that are really student-centered programs. Yeah, the goal is to refine our RTI system so all students are learning to their highest potential. And then we're really using that magic word that you always hear us say, the FAR cycle, to monitor students' progress towards learning targets. So we're continually using formative assessments in that cycle to understand where each kid is and give them feedback in order to help them reach their targets. And then finally, the last objective is engage students. And this one is that we're really working for students to own their learning, and we really want to grow our high needs, students to become independent learners. So many of them can be so dependent on teachers, and we're really working to grow them to be independents. And we think that the best way to do that is to get them engaged in the project-based learning and really shift that, our curriculums to looking at, you know, student-driven learning so that they are truly owning it and engaged by it. So that's, in a nutshell, our strategic plan. The final part of this plan is to really think about metrics. How are we going to measure the effectiveness of this program? So in order, our initial thoughts around social-emotional learning and engagement, since they are very, they're harder things to measure, is to think about a lot of districts are using, you know, survey instruments to do that. So we're going to be investigating that, and we're charging the topical groups to kind of talk to other districts and talk to the experts that the grant brings in to think about survey instruments for it. But they also are going to be asking them about other ways that they are seeing, you know, districts measure or that they're thinking about measuring in their research. So more to come on those two objectives. And then finally, on the core, you know, the curriculum and instruction objective, we felt like that we really should be going with some of the traditional measures that we have had in the past. And what was interesting as we thought, you know, there's a lot of data out there for us to look at, and we really thought, you know, what would be natural to look at is the exit year. So when we think of the chunking of the grade levels, we think K to 2 at elementary for the primary grades, 3 to 5, 6 to 8, and then 9 through 12. So what we thought we'd do is take some measures for each of those grade levels. So at the exit at grade 2, one of the biggest things is reading at grade level. So we're looking at the percent of students that are able to read at grade level. Right now, in our data, we have 78% of second graders reading at the grade level, and we're looking to increase that by the end of the strategic plan to about 90% of our students reading at grade level. And we feel like using reading workshop and some of the new curriculums that we do have in place that we're able to, will be able to reach that target. And also tightening that tier-one academic intervention. In grade 5, since we were focused on reading at grade 2, we thought at the exit of grade 5 that we would look at math. And at this point, we have 48% of fifth graders meeting or exceeding standards on the math MCAS test. So we're hoping to reach the 60th percentile with the fifth graders to meet and exceed. At grade 6, we felt like grade 2 was a while ago that we looked at ELA. So we thought right away at grade 6, we would look at the ELA MCAS and kind of get a read on where the kids are there. And right now, we had 43%, this was in the 2017 data, 43% of the sixth graders are meeting or exceeding the standards. And we're, again, looking for the shift up to 60. Then at the end of middle school, we're looking at the math MCAS test, and we, right now, have 47% of our eighth graders at the meeting or exceeding level, and we're looking again for the 60th percentile. And then at grade 10, we felt like, because it is their competency determination, that we would culminate it with looking at both ELA and math as well. So those are our traditional measures, and so that was our thought on the achievement metrics. So that's our presentation on the strategic plan. We'd like to get your feedback.
All right. Questions? Comments? Mary Beth?
A lot of information.
A lot of information.
A lot to take in, but it looks to be a great strategic plan going forward and looking forward to everything, and even the grant that we have that the teachers and the leadership team are working on. And the project-based learning is very exciting, I think, for all, because I think that's what a lot of parents are looking for, for their students to have, and I'm looking forward to that coming into the district. And it's already started in the high school, and I know it's going to be happening on the elementary and the middle school level. And I really think that that will help students be more engaged in the learning. So thank you for all the hard work that you're doing and really looking forward to it. I can't believe that we're into another strategic plan. The other one, I mean, it went by so quick, and now we're looking at 2023. Like, that's crazy. But thank you. That's all I have right now.
I think as we do that, we keep, it continues to flow in that way from having seven themes to four themes to now the two themes of social-emotional learning, engage students, really continuing to focus in on where's our foundation, making sure we have that strong foundation and continue to build off of that. And a piece that you said about it is, it can be overwhelming with all of this here. We'll continue to chunk out the pieces, and at every school committee meeting, have another part to continue giving updates as we did through the last strategic plan so that way all of this becomes part of what we do and what we talk about. And for the project-based learning, we do have another day with Frank Locker that we'll be planning for the fall from continuing the work now that we have the strategic plan for him to really help us think about going deeper into our thinking about that. And also, at the end of October, there's a project-based learning that happens in Massachusetts also that we're going to, this, in a couple of days, working with our administrative team, start to put our team together to go to that conference.
Awesome. Thank you.
Eric?
So what I like about the plan initially at first read is that the focusing on three core areas, I think makes sense. Sometimes it felt like the previous five-year plan was a little ambitious and big, which is good in most instances, but it can also sort of, you try and do too many things at once, and do you do any of them well? So, and I think we did in general, but I don't mind seeing the focus, not necessarily, I wouldn't say it's narrow because there's a lot within these three areas, but it gives you a more understandable and clear framework. So I think, you know, that's excellent. I liked that we kept the mission statement. I think that its impact on the students was evident, just anecdotally, in the graduation piece last year where the, where the class officers were incorporating pieces of that in their speeches. Clearly, it made an impression. So I think we've tried to keep the things we're doing right. I also think that one of the hallmarks of the way we executed the strategic plan in the last five years was always having connections. Everything we did was connected to the strategic plan. And I'm already seeing an instance of that tonight when we talk about the core social and emotional competencies, I guess you'd call them. And they also showed up in the, what we look at in terms of Danvers-Cairns. So we can already see that, you know, we're going to keep doing what we do, which is try and draw those connections and have an integrated approach. So lots of good stuff. I did have one question, and it's really more of curiosity and maybe context around some terms. But when you talk about a student-centered curriculum, what is the alternative to a student-centered curriculum? It would seem to me that all curricula would be student-centered. So when we go out of our way to say, no, there's a difference, what do you mean by that, Mary?
That the student is at the center of the work. So if you're in a classroom, what you would see is a short teacher presentation, probably max 10 minutes. And then for the remaining, say it's an hour-long class, for the remaining 50 minutes, the kids are working. Or the remaining, like, 45, the kids are working, and then the teacher comes in at the end to help summarize like the learning that happened and the kids were doing in the lesson. So most of the work is done by the students and not all the lifting done by the teacher. So that they're really working hard to make sense of and explore the concepts that the teachers are, want them to look at.
So when we talk about student-centered curriculum, we're really talking about the whole student-centered learning piece, were they taking responsibility for their own learning to some extent? Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. And that they're working together collaboratively to make sense of information together. So it's not just the kid isolated all by themselves. If they're confused or do they understand what it's trying to say, they're making sense of it with their peers. So it really is helping solidify that learning.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, the concept of the teacher standing in front of the room and lecturing to the students who take notes and then try and regurgitate it on a test is really not working anymore for students and certainly not helping people advance. So clearly, things are changing, and it's changing for the better, I think. I guess that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great presentation, as always, Mary. Thank you. You have some aggressive goals there, which is great. And I'd love to see, you know, the results year to year so we see that we're making the right progress and need to determine whether or not we need to adjust any of those goals, one way or the other, as we move forward. That's it.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll pick up on the aggressive goals. I mean, some of those are very impressive. If you're talking grade 6 going from 43 to over 60, I mean, those are, those are good. Are those stretch goals or are these very attainable based on the data that you believe we're going to be seeing?
I believe they are attainable. The thing is that we're just at the new years of testing. So that the MCAS test switched over in 2017, 2018 are the years of where the, all the standards, new standards were being tested. So we were not aware of how, you know, what was being tested, how they were going to, what the tests were going to look like, you know, exactly. So I feel like now with more analysis of the data that is coming out from the Department of Ed, that we will be able to get a better handle on it and that these were definitely some baseline measures based on, you know, switching over to, from the computer-based testing and things like that. So I'm hoping that they are. But I think, as Dave said, that maybe we can, as the years, you know, first, especially when the 19 data comes out, we can look at that and see how we're progressing, if we're going to be able to make those jumps.
Just add to that for a second. Well, I'm beginning to. In five years from now, who knows where the state's going to be with their testing? So I want to make sure we're not relying on that.
Right.
Like you've done in the past several years, getting local data. So if we could maybe have some kind of column, like I would assume the 78% of second graders at reading level, that's local data.
Yeah, that is accurate.
When you move down, we're going to state data. So if we could have a local column for that, you know, just so we can have consistency because most likely the state will change.
Yeah, exactly.
And we do have a piece of that in the strategic plan to talk about the FAR cycle and the work with the formative assessment. So to, when we make presentations, to be more direct about that. Thank you.
Great. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, no. That was good. The strategic plan does have those goals, but this is just the strategic plan. Every school, every, it has unique ones which are very much focused on individual learning, which is what I like, right? That's where it's, you know, individual to the student. It's not just this.
Actually, I just realized that I forgot that bullet point on the slide. I rushed to put in a table of these achievement metrics, but the first bullet on the actual strategic plan underneath the achievement is that we'll be monitoring the logic models that, of the FAR cycle work that the schools are doing. So that would be the yearly report of the local data. And so we're kicking, at the middle and high school, we're kicking off that work with Nancy Love on Wednesday. She's coming in to help us really think about how to really start to collect that data on the formative assessments and monitor students.
Great.
It's a natural method. So you're, we appreciate the timeliness more than the one bullet. So that's very good. So the three aspects of the focus, so engage students, curriculum, and safe and supporting learning environments, are those the three that you feel will contribute the most to achieving those particular goals? As evidenced by MCAS, but probably a lot of other things.
Other thing, and that's sort of, like, if you go back, we're really going to be working with those experts and with the, on the grant to kind of figure out what are other metrics that we can use in the areas of student engagement. There's a, you know, a lot of, of the project-based learning groups that are out there, you know, state testing data is not how you measure project-based learning. And so there are other metrics that they're looking at, although it's pretty new to look at, you know. So we're, we're really looking at the research. We follow some of the groups on Twitter and some of their blogs that they have. So, and we work with Frank Locker, is a big proponent of the project-based learning. So we'll be attending his conference and kind of getting some more ideas from him about how we start to measure that. Because the, the engagement isn't gonna be measured by an MCAS test, you know? So it's kind of opposite. So how'd that work?
Right, the research shows that if the engagement increases, your scores will increase.
Will increase, yeah.
Right, it's not like, so it's the chicken or the egg?
Yeah, and I mean, I mean, that's the biggest thing, right? Because if you're selling us currently 43% of the sixth graders meet or exceed standards, you're like, why isn't it 100? Like, what do we have to do to get to be 100? And so yes, there's some portion out there that you will say is systemic, right? It's, you know, kids have tough lives, whatever it is. We, we can't fix that. You know, to Eric's point earlier, you can't fix everything in school. But for those things that we believe are under at least some portion of our control, that will then help, you know, and manifest itself in improved learning, in particular academics and some of these other metrics. So that's good. I like that there is some data behind it, as you said, Keith, and look forward to it.
I, I also believe that social emotional learning is a big part of some of our achievement that work that we need to do too, because there's a lot of work with teachers to help understand some of the social emotional needs that happen in the classroom. So all kids are ready to learn and, and that.
And we've seen that in other schools. So to the question that we talked about earlier with the, you know, common area to, to help support students, we've seen this, these particular efforts work in, in other schools around the country.
Yeah, yeah, there's some intercity schools that are definitely out there that have done a lot of research and we've been reading that in, in that grant work that we've been doing.
Good. Thank you.
So I agree with a lot of that, so I don't wanna repeat it. But I'll just say, some of this stuff is like, I think it's really good. And some of it's so just common sense stuff that, again, I'm wondering why we haven't said these things before. Not that we haven't, I mean, like, if you look at the three strategic objectives, I mean, they're kind of like the most important things that we would do as a, as a, as a school system, right? Safe and supporting learning environments, coherent curriculum and instruction, and engaged students. I think we've kind of always worked on that, but now that it's kind of the linchpin of the strategic plan and we keep to that all the time, I think that's great. I mean, I just think that those are the three things that are the most important things that you could be doing. And again, not to repeat things, but I just, so, and I don't, you know, this visioning stuff is beyond me because it's like, it's like up in the, it's like, vision, we have visions. But I love this vision for students. It's like the best thing I've, I've, I've read this whole meeting. It's like perfect. If you could come out in 2023 with the kids that do all this stuff, you'd have like the best set of kids that ever in the history of the world. So, so if this is what we are, and of course, you can't really judge a strategic plan at the beginning, you can only kind of see if you're looking, you're pointing yourself in the right direction. If we focus on those three things and, and point towards getting the students that are in, that we're visioning in 2023, I think we're, we're doing great. So I mean, I just think we're starting from a great standpoint. And like Eric, I'm, I'm also happy that we kept the mission statements because it'll give me more time to work on it. And I'll, I'll get it soon before I leave. So this is great. So thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we need a vote, right? Because we did.
Oh, that's right. Yep.
You had the motion and then we had the discussion.
First reading, so. Did we have?
We had the motion and the discussion.
We have a motion in a second, so long ago that I don't remember?
Yes.
All right.
Did we? I don't know that we did.
Motion to.
I didn't think so either.
There was no motion. I'm in motion.
All right, who made a motion?
I did, just now.
All right, who seconded?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our school improvement plans for 2018-19, the superintendent recommends the approval of the proposed 2018-19 K, pre-K to 12, school improvement plans for a first reading.
Someone second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
So I have an overview, right? So we have all seven principles here to be able to talk about their school improvement plans with any questions that you may have, some highlights from them. And again, what I'm very proud of is that alignment and all of us really going in the same direction, I think I heard it from school committee too, but knowing that each school needs to kind of take this and make it their own as we go forward with that alignment. So at the elementary level, elementary science is our, really that last part of having that strong foundation of research-based, evidence-based curriculums for our students. So you'll see elementary science is one of the same goals for this coming school year. And then each school has their logic model and from the work through the FAR cycle, coaching high-impact teaching teams, it really is focused in on math this year. And again, as Mary has talked about, we kind of keep going back and looking at between English Language Arts and math to keep each of them moving forward. And then what was very encouraging is that each school then took for SEL and really took about what we were talking about of what we've had in the past and where each school is in going forward with social emotional learning. So you'll see how they are working on that. At the middle school level, the FAR cycle, really making sure that that is implemented at the next level for them. And then looking at student engagement with project-based learning and the culture at the middle school continue to be their goals for next year. At Danvers High School, again, just looking at different wording, but the same pieces of it, their first one is looking at equity and excellence. And then looking at, and that has to do again with that FAR cycling in the project-based learning, the project lead the way. And then we have student engagement and the work with social emotional learning at the high school also. And their strategies are all listed in there for you. So we open it up to any questions that you may have for any of us on the administrative team.
Does anybody have any questions? Who would like to start? Mary Beth, you look like you have something to say.
Or comments.
I was curious about the middle schools, uh, goal three, which was the, let me just pull it back up.
Culture.
Positive school climate with as, behavior, school behavior and all. Can you just discuss a little bit more? I know I've read it in here, but is the DARE program expanding? Is that, no? Because I know they get it in sixth grade, but are, is the police department or DARE gonna kind of expand seventh and eighth?
So, yeah, that's a very specific, you know, piece, but we, we have had some preliminary discussions with our SROs about reconnecting the eighth grade to either Officer Collet or Officer Balmasari and just, we think it's kind of a natural time to bring them back into the fold before they exit the middle school. So we just had, you know, that's something we're gonna explore this year and see how that can fit into our focus on social emotional learning. That's, you know, one, one piece in terms of the community, connecting to the community, connecting the work in the school to the community outside of the school.
Right, that's great. And so, and then the, an SOS team? Can you just explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so we, we've always had a group of, of professionals from our school that met regularly to, to talk about kids, to, to look at, you know, kids who are maybe struggling and, and come up with ways to help them. I think what we've done is really work on formalizing that process. So it, it's gone from a, sort of a group of caring adults to a really focused intervention team now that's gonna put in place strategies, interventions, gauge their success, and then either continue them, or if they're not going well, try, you know, try other approaches. So I think we just, you know, we continue to really sharpen that process. And we've been able to beef up some of our, we have a halftime social worker now in addition to our full-time social worker. And we're also able to offer our, our school adjustment counselor program that we have with Leahy Behavioral, now we, every single day, we'll have someone every single day in our school as well. So we sort of expanded that, that model for this, this upcoming year.
Yeah, I think that's a great goal, considering the stay in age and all the new things that kids are getting into and the choices they're making. And I think, as we all kind of know, middle schools are really tough years for kids as growing and becoming their own young adults. So I really, I think that's a great goal. I think the whole school improvement was a great report. So I just wanna thank you, Adam, and your, your team for really seeing that that is a, a need to be worked on, not only with the school, but the families, the community, and the, you know, the teachers as well. So thank you. That was really the only question.
Mr. Chairman, before Adam sits down, since I hate to make people jump up and back. So I apologize for the interruption, but I, I noticed, I was thinking of the fourth goal, which really centers around community and parent engagement. And that was a little different than some of the schools. And do you find that a greater challenge at, at sort of that middle school level where people are making that transition from elementary where the parents are usually really involved? Then you sort of have high school where, because of things like band and sports, you have a lot of parental involvement and the community gets excited about things. Do you feel this, that's a greater challenge for you at the middle school level?
So I think, you know, any middle school parent would tell you that their child doesn't really talk to them a whole lot in general. But what we, we felt like it was important to continue to expand engaging our students with the community around them. That includes certainly their parents, but also kind of throughout our plan, our ways that we're gonna connect the learning that's happening in our building to the community around us. So there are, there are pieces in here about just showcasing more projects. We fully revamped our student-led Conference Day event last year, and we're gonna continue working on that. So we just felt like it's, it's, it's a natural age to have more systems in place to connect the outside community to the community at Holton Richmond, and just to continue to build upon, on that work. So that was sort of a, an extra goal that we just felt like is always important with adolescents, just making those connections strong and continuing them.
I like it. I think every, every age range has its challenges, but there are some pretty unique challenges to dealing with students who are sort of, I always say they're too, you know, they're, they've advanced well beyond the elementary level, but they aren't sometimes quite smart enough to make the right choices yet. I shouldn't say smart enough, maybe that's the wrong word, but they're really sort of in between. So yeah, trying to keep them engaged and, and a watchful eye is important. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody else want to talk to Adam before you, before we let Adam sit down? Everybody good? All right, then Eric, do you have anything else?
Uh, let's see.
Thanks, Adam.
I could circle the therapeutic learning centers, but we already talked about that. Let's see. Uh, the inner, a high school question for, for maybe for Jason or your team. Can you talk a little bit about the innovative pathway program? What that really means? I think it's a, we can get certified through the state, is that right?
Right, so it's an initiative that DESI started. They had their first round of designations announced last spring. So I think three districts did it. So for example, it was either Nantucket or Martha's Vineyard or some sort of town around there where they connected to the marine economy. So the whole idea is to get, it's to connect college and career readiness. So again, it's that idea of having a broad interest. So it's not like, I'm gonna go be a mechanical engineer. It's like, I wanna be, maybe get into engineer or I like design. So it's not super specific, but it's a general area. So we, we had a study group or a task force, a spring of 20 teachers, talk about what that might look like at Danvers High School. We'll continue those discussions this year around planning, so no, no implementation. And it also ducktails off of the project-based learning work. So the grant from Project Lead the Way that we received last year to build a biomedical science pathway. This really would be, the idea would be a course sequence of, you know, two to three courses outside of the graduation requirements that are already existing that dive deep, allow kids to dive deeper, sort of like a mini-major, I guess, would be sort of a good analogy to college. And then like we've talked about earlier, connecting it to some of the structures already in place. So advisory, the internship, community service, things like that.
I like it. I mean, just, just reading about it was interesting and seems to give an opportunity for some students, so that's great.
Great way to get in some of the, just the standalone courses we've offered. We've seen students come and like, that becomes like the students that came last year, sort of like one of the reasons that they come to school and they get really excited about it. And, you know, just anecdotally, a couple of kids that never thought they'd be interested in engineering or computer science class are, are really excited about it.
Again, I love to see things that are innovative and give students exposure to things they might not otherwise get. So that's great. Thank you. That's really the only thing I had.
Any other high school questions from anybody? Pretty good? Okay. I guess you can sit down now. Eric, do you have anything else?
I looked, you know, looking through all of the elementary plans, you can see the, everyone's working on the Amplify piece. There seems in most of the schools, a real attention on formative assessments in one form or another. And then I get the sense that each of you at the elementary level looked at your own school population and community and said, this is really what we need to do from the emotional learning piece, the social learning piece. Because, you know, the school communities can be different. So I get the feeling you all tried to individualize that a little bit, and that makes perfect sense. So, no, overall, very pleased with all the plans, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave?
Since all the administrators are here and gave up their evening, I feel like I should ask a question, but I do not have any to ask, so I will pass.
Jeff?
My question is just really on the elementary level. Big picture, science, that has always sort of seemed like an outlier for some of our scores and just, just in general. I mean, every time I would look at it, it was, it just seemed really rough. There's a lot of focus on this, this year. And if I go back to what you said for the strategic plan, the three areas, safe and supportive learning environment, coherent curriculum and instruction, and engaged students. And I hate using the word field, but I'm gonna use it. I feel like the issues in the past were not around engaged students. We've got really good teachers who I felt like students were usually engaged with science. It's always, to Art's point earlier, I feel like we've always done safe and supportive learning environments for science. But I see a new curriculum for science. So am I inferring from that that we believe that this new curriculum is a key component to really improving the understanding of our students of science and its importance going forward?
Yes, it really is. We've been, we were waiting for many years for the Department of Ed to finalize their science framework before, before choosing a program. Sue Wimbroszovic, it was a big push for her. She was really having, anxious for us to look at the science curriculum, but the framework was in a, kind of like in limbo at the Department of Education and it just was finalized a year ago. So at that time, Holton Richmond Middle School really was looking and they adopted a program last year. And then Julie needed another year to get the writing workshop, you know, pretty solidified before jumping into a new curriculum. Because if you remember, elementaries have to teach, you know, English Language Arts, math, science, and social studies. So that, we have to be careful with balancing what teachers are learning as far as a curriculum. So as Holton Richmond was researching programs, Julie Posternak was also working with some teachers to look at some science programs as well. And so they ended up picking Amplify. And if you would like, Julie could speak to you further about that program. She's always fun to have up there.
Come on, Julie.
Come on, Julie, yes. We'd love to hear about Amplify. And also maybe if you could comment Amplify as far as timing of when some of the specific topics were taught. Because I remember a couple of years ago, we would talk about some of these questions on the science MCAS. And I remember specifically asking, you know, well, why did we miss this or why did so many students? And it was really, it was the right answer, which was, we taught it before, but you're being tested on it either at a later time. So the timing was completely off. So we had the curriculum, we're teaching students, but by that time, you don't know when they're gonna be tested in that. So if you could add maybe how Amplify helps some of that, that'd be awesome.
Sure. So we are very excited to be implementing Amplify next year, K through five, across the five elementary schools. Last year, we had a pilot team, one teacher at each grade level across the five schools. And they were able to pilot one of the units. So Amplify is a very unique program. It is the content from Lawrence Hall, which is in California. So it's a high-level science content, but it was designed with technology and students in mind. So it's a combination of hands-on activities, but also a lot of simulations online. So it coincides nicely with, next, this year we'll have three through five having one-to-one Chromebooks at the elementary level. So students will be doing a lot of their science work this year also with their Chromebooks as well. We are particularly excited, we were particularly excited about Amplify because at the elementary level, like Mary mentioned, we teach everything. So if you're a fourth-grade teacher, you're responsible for teaching all subjects. And so we knew going into this search that at the elementary level, we needed a very strong curriculum that teachers could lean on and implement, that had the knowledge base in it, that they would be able to bring forth to their students. When we piloted it, we found that students were highly engaged, very excited about science. The teacher said it, it was work on their part to implement it. However, we determined that any science program would be work to implement. But I think the biggest driving factor for us was that it was aligned to the new standards and that the students were highly engaged with the online simulations, building things. We, for a long time, purposely at the elementary level, have left science sort of sitting right here, and purposely made the decision to focus on reading and writing workshop and really making sure that was really strong. Because as you said, Jeff, when they get to fifth grade and they take the Science MCAS, it's actually a highly, relies heavily on their ability to read and write even more than the science content. And that's what this is really about. It's about kids learning how to read, make sense of things, be able to write like a scientist, read like a scientist. So, and we should see as the new science assessments come out, less focus on sort of regurgitating specific facts about wind and erosion and all of those things, but instead being able to read multiple texts on a similar topic and be able to do compare and contrast of two nonfiction topics, which will be on a science assessment, but it's also really a reading skill and a writing skill. So it's been a long time coming. The elementary's been waiting for a science curriculum. So we are very excited. It also coincides with elementary having schedules for the first time. And so we've blocked out, K through two has three science units a year, and three through five has four science units. So three through five will be teaching three one-hour science lessons a week. And K through two will be teaching two one-hour science lessons a week. All of the lessons are one hour in length. And we're just really excited about the materials, the program, the technology component. And we're excited to see kids excited for science. And it'll be another thing for elementary teachers to take on, but they're ready. And I've promised them it's the last piece to the puzzle. And really, it solidifies the elementary level having research-based, really strong curriculum for all academic areas. So then we're just going to continue to hopefully get better and better at those and not get a new curriculum. That's the plan.
That is great. And it ties out to what we were talking about before, which is the collaboration. Because, and so I know Dave, you know, didn't, wasn't able to get everybody in there, but I see Jeff Lieberman in the back, so let's throw his name out there. So let's, let's thank you for the technology that makes this happen. I'm going to assume we have enough, you know, cloud computing power for all these simulations. And, you know, we've got the internet up to speed on that, which is great. So this is how it's supposed to work, right? We see an issue, we collaborate, you know, as a team. It's been, you know, looked at by several teachers. It's been tested. I'm sure we're going to make some improvements as we go through this. So thank you to all the teachers and administrators who have gone through the pilots, because I'm sure it wasn't easy. But it will make a difference. And to see students excited about science again is, I think, honestly something I think we've been missing for the past couple of years. So I'm glad we're getting back on track with that as well. So thank you.
If we want students to be excited, just give them half an hour with Julie on any given day.
I know.
They're going to be excited.
Anything else, Jeff?
No, it's good. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody, everybody good?
The only thing I would add, and you're probably going to say the same thing, Mr. Chairman, but just because we don't have a lot of questions, really, that's a sign that we like what we see. And just for one, and I hope all of us, I appreciate the amount of work that has to have gone into these plans over the course of the year, and everybody in your school community who contributes to it. And so thank you not only for coming out on a summer night to talk to us about this, but.
Or not talk to us.
Exactly, yeah. But just the amount of time and work you put in to come up with real solid plans for your schools, it shows your passion and commitment to what you're doing. And we do appreciate it.
Well, since you said that, then I don't have anything to say.
Well said.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, everyone.
Great, thank you. Great. Thank you. So the rest of our business for this evening, we have homeschool proposals. The superintendent recommends the approval of the notice of intent for eight homeschool home education proposals for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, they're approved.
Great. And we'll just have a couple more for September in working with the families that are, do this on a yearly basis. Out of state and overnight field trips, the superintendent recommends the approval of the overnight out-of-state field trip request from Danvers High School cross-country to Warwick, Rhode Island, September 22, 2018, and our grade six to go to Stone Environmental Camp, Madison, New Hampshire, October 10 through the 12th, and October 22 through the 24th of 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next.
Thank you. Fundraising requests, all of our elementary schools. The superintendent recommends the approval of the fundraising events for grade O, Highlands, Riverside, Smith, and Thorpe School PACs, our Danvers High School soccer boosters, and the Danvers High School field hockey boosters.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What are our business?
Communications, again, the Linkchewa, our North Shore Education Consortium. And I will be the chair of the board for this year. So I have my first planning meeting on Friday morning, and we'll start in September with our meetings during the school year, and we'll keep you updated.
Eric, I assume there's no legislation this month?
Well, just a report on the final budget that was actually passed. The legislature is in recess, but the final governor's budget, or final budget that was signed by the governor, will get, Danvers will get $6.8 million roughly in Chapter 70 local aid. There is, the special education circuit breaker for the state is $319 million plus, almost 319 and a half, which is a 25.6 million increase over FY18. The reimbursement rate should be about 72.5%. I don't know how that compares to previous years, Keith, but.
Pretty much.
I take it that's healthy, yeah.
Yes.
After-school and out-of-school time grants, the budget includes 4.2 million, almost 4.3 million for that. That funding helps to provide opportunities for children to participate in activities outside the traditional classroom setting. Through those grants, many children are able to participate in STEM activities as well as arts. I don't know if we participate in that program, but the money's out there if it's a.
We've applied and we did not, we got one grant a long time ago, but we haven't got one since.
Homeless student transportation, $9 million roughly has been apportioned. It's a $1 million increase from FY18. Advanced placement math and science programs, the budget provides 2.8, almost 2.9 million for the AP math and science line item. This is a $300,000 increase for FY18. This provide funding for mass math and science initiative, which works to expand AP programs throughout the state. And finally, in terms of special education transportation, there's a study group being set to look at, I suspect, innovative ways to deal with transportation costs for out-of-district placements, vocational schools, that sort of thing. So I think they're looking for innovative ways to save some costs on transportation between districts. So that's about it for legislation. As I say, we're in recess now.
Thank you. Anything going on with DEEP?
We're, we will be having our first meeting of the new year, September 19, at First Ipswich Bank at 7:45 in the morning. Everyone is invited. But just also wanted to say that on October 25 is the annual DEEP Wine and Food Tasting, and this year it is our 20th anniversary. So that's a huge milestone. And again, tickets will be on sale starting in September. And it is shaping up to be a great event. And again, I want to thank everyone that supports it. Proceeds from this wine tasting go to support our teacher grant program that gives out up to at least $20,000 every year. And I think this year we'll be looking to also see how these DEEP grants can delve deeper into education here in Danvers. So be working with the superintendent and Mary to see how we can, you know, think up some new things that teachers can apply for, or how we can better help the school system, so.
Thank you. I don't think we have anything more on Danvers scares, do we?
No.
All right, we're good with Danvers scares. I don't think we have anything on CPAC.
No, we have the resource fair though, coming up on Thursday, September 6. So we're looking forward to our continued work with CPAC and our new leadership.
And we don't have anything.
Is that at Riverside?
It'll be at Riverside as part of the preschool open house again. So in another week or so, we'll be getting the information out with all the back-to-school newsletters.
Okay, thanks. Nothing on policy, but there will be something soon on policy, I think. So Dave, we'll get to do something.
It's about time, right?
Right. MASC did a major sort of overhaul of policies. So we had a summer intern from college work with us on that. And then the work with the senior internship and being able to have those discussions. Thank you.
Okay. And Human Rights and Inclusion Committee, anything?
There was a letter that was submitted to the Danvers Herald and the Salem News, which I don't know if it's been published yet, but it is.
I saw it. I think it was in this.
Was it?
Last week's edition. I think it's online anyway.
It is online. Yeah, that's right. So it's just a commentary on the detainment of parents for.
Separating children.
Separating children, right, that have, right, so you all can read it, but it was signed by us, wholeheartedly supported. And so it's a very interesting read. So I definitely recommend everybody look at that.
Okay, thanks. And minutes?
Minutes, because my computer is still on summer vacation. It died on me halfway through the meeting. So I'm going to borrow Mr. Kay's and.
Students always say.
Exactly, yeah. I feel their pain. So I move to approve and release the minutes from the June 11, 2018 regular meeting and to release the school year 17, 18 executive session meeting. Minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Personnel?
Before you, the, I guess not monthly, the summer, hirings that we've done to get ready for the school year. And we're getting very close to being fully staffed, and then one of our very capable aides goes and get a full-time teaching job in another district, and then we retire somebody else.
Is that the one with the masses in social work?
No. She was actually with us before, and then left to go be a long-term sub, and now is back with us because she did enjoy her time in Danvers so much. So she is very capable, and we're excited to have her.
Excellent.
All right. And you didn't do any budget work this month?
Well, we did close out the year on budget, as we always do.
You look pretty tan. I mean.
I can do it from the beach, apparently.
You've gone the whole summer, is that what happened?
We'll have the report in October, once we finish our state reporting and any transfers we need to do for the state reporting.
All right, great. Thank you. When is our next meeting?
September 10.
And school have started.
Yes.
Yes.
Interesting. I won't even know that anymore. All right, Dave?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Goodnight, Danvers.